I ended up spending the entire night in the, I don't know, the ER with my grandson. And he just broke out and, you know, I told you I was sick. Just plain red all over, broke out hobs and I couldn't control his fever, so. We had an IV and some medicine and a lot of tests and so.
Is he better this morning?
He's still got a pretty hot fever, but he's not itching as much and his hobs are somewhat better.
What a poor thing.
It's miserable. He's never, never had that before. He's only, even one of them had that severe very much. But um, he's a sick little fellow. Hate to hear that. Victor couldn't go in, so he slept in the truck.
Like y'all had a rough night.
How about your sister-in-law, what does she do? How about your sister-in-law, what does she do?
I got pretty good down.
All right, chestnuts, what about she?
Every now and then they come to rest. Go back or stand.
Is that, is it cool now?
I don't know.
I have a cousin in the Jets who goes there, they, it's about, possibly a year, they have to remove school or something.
I heard another case out of uh. Pressed you yesterday. And it was an exercise on killer liver. Young girl, girl. And when you come on the deck of the train over there. It's more prevalent now than we used to hear. About that time?
Yes.
Thank you for the sign up, we can come together and serve you all. Bless the privilege that we have, so that in this capacity, pray for your leadership, I think God has required it. And as nation, I wanted you to bless, we would be one nation under God, and pray for our conviction and all that's necessary. I mean, I have a word for you, thank you for that. I pray that you will as soon as need, where it's calm, share with your people, and your son, and thank you for our own sake in Jesus.
Amen. To the God of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, universal, with liberty and justice for all. Always thought, I mean, we always have a few tidbits to like to stick in it, and uh. One of us, the conference line has been set up. The number is one dash nine one seven nine zero zero one zero two two. The access code is thirty-two, thirty-four, seven pound sign. And this is not a free uh number, maybe you may be subject to longer than charged according to your plan. When the chairperson opened the meeting for public comment, please follow the instructions. Dial five, the moderator will unmute your line when it's your turn to speak. And notify you about a last minute, announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. So please announce your address and your name when you speak, please. Any person wishing to address the board regarding an intended item will be given three minutes to speak. And may only speak to that item once. With that being said, we will go to our agenda now, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye, okay. Consider agenda, is anything on the consent agenda you'd like to pull off or talk about, or ask him comments?
Motion to approve.
Second, all in favor? We go down to number eight. The board to consider concurrence with the Florida Department of Health Department of the County Health Department Administrator. As intended by the county administrator. Good morning.
As you may recall, um, the previous administrator for our local health department retired approximately five months ago, and that was Pat Boras. Um, the Florida Department of Health wishes to fill this vacancy. They have advertised for the position, screened the candidates, interviewed, and the Florida Surgeon General recommends Tanya Hobbie. Who has been the in our director for five months. Miss Hobbie has over twenty years' public health experience. Um, and would bring a wealth of knowledge to this position. Um, Becky Keys with Florida Department of Health is present if you have any questions about the process or if there's anything you'd like to know. Actually, Miss Hobbie and Miss Keys are present.
Which one, you, Miss Hobbie? I think I've not talked to you a couple of times, am I right? Did I call, I called the county health department?
I think I have spoken with you one time, yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am, I think I'm free of this COVID now. Uh, I appreciate that information and uh, and your direction, okay? All right. What do we need to approve?
Well, per Florida State statute, it does require concurance from the board and order for Miss Hobbie to um, to take this position as a minister. So that's all I would ask of you, if you wish to confer.
Motion to concur with Florida Department of Health recommendation, second.
Second, all in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
President, thank you.
For the nine, the board to consider approval of grant application for the Coastal Partnership Initiative. CPI of the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. F, is that correct? FDEP and tile building coastal stewardship for Taylor County for the period of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. As intended by Victor Blenker, marine agent.
Oh, great. Here I am. You're wearing a mission, sorry to do that today.
Good morning.
Yeah, and we have to present this proposal today, it was uh. The commissioner, Commissioner Newman, and different commissioners and different organizations, when we do our extension activities, they're always on the lookout for funding. To improve our communities and youth uh. Knowledge on environmental issues, especially related to our needs in Taylor County. Uh, so when I received the uh, the information about this uh, grant uh, opportunity, I shared it with different organizations. I sent it to Commissioner Newman, I sent it to this Inhachi uh, for your board, this Inhachi Chamber of Commerce. Um, and a couple of other people. Commissioner Newman reached out to me to see if I could, could have like, prepare a draft proposal. Uh, to, to address one of the priority areas of this uh, grant application. The grant has four, four main areas that you might have read in the package. Uh, one is receiving communities, the second one is coastal resources stewardship. There are access to coastal resources and for working waterfront. So as my role is more into the extension of reach and education, I decided to prepare a proposal based on this strategic priority area of the, of the grant. Basically, what we're saying is to have four main activities during the, the year. Uh, which will include activities by our act of humanist strength and by myself. Uh, and the ideas to give of the youth from the Perry and Steen Hatchie and perhaps other schools that might have requested. To, to address uh, um, environmental topics like recreational fishing and best practices or water quality. Uh, the ideas to work in a project that they feel comfortable with. Uh, we have a list and the ideas that they decide which topic they, they want to address. Based on that, uh, especially with youth, uh, they will develop a program during the whole year. And then at the end, uh, the idea of that project is to, is to come up with an outcome that might be uh, useful for the community or for the school. Um, other activities is related to data identification and removal of invasive plants. And planting uh, Florida friendly landscaping plants in a coastal, coastal areas, of course. Uh, other activities are related to. Um, the installation of habitat and coastal stewardship signage. We, we have been working on that, we have like, for example, the lionfish, we have the shellfish trial, uh, we have managed to signage. But ideas to work, uh, for example, on topics that are more important for, for coastal habitats like sea grasses, uh, scouts, uh, and so on. And um, and of course, we will also work with adults. Maybe we will try to uh, target like charter captains and tourists related to the coast uh, people. And to increase their awareness and knowledge of different coastal topics that might affect in the, directly or indirectly their businesses and their livelihood. So, um, the proposal is um. Requires a one hundred percent match funds. And what we're putting there is basically the salaries that we as an extension agents receive by the county and by the university. And um, uh, volunteer hours that can be uh, uh, calculated in, in um, match funding as well. And then the rest of the, of the match fund is going to be like, for travel, we use, you know, county gas, so we account for that. Uh, equipment that usually through the extension uh, regular budget that we have, we usually buy supplies or buy up some equipment. So uh, that uh, that funding is, is available and is allocated for the extension office. And then to DEP, we're requesting basically uh, funding for contractor services, which will be the design uh, and the installation of these uh, signage. The purchase of plants for the Florida landscape um, uh, plants, planting. And uh, for some travel expenses, like if we need to rent a boat uh, or, or something to do a field activity. I think it's important to, to have those resources. And I forgot, also part of the, of the goal is to have a summer camp to immerse coastal and kids from uh, the county in coastal issues. So to bring them to the coast, show them, do activities in the water, uh, talk about our biodiversity or coastal systems, or they're important, or we need to preserve them. And, and do hands-on activity which will build uh, skills in the long term for, for these group of kids. So thanks, this is uh, the final draft proposal, is still, the deadline for the submission is October fifteenth. So it's still open for some changes, if you might have some, I'd be glad to, to include those into the proposal.
Okay.
I thank our marine agent for his efforts. I certainly support uh, this potential when seeing our coastal stewardship being bolstered that are used through adults, through all those that touch our coastline. Certainly need to have a, a deep and greater appreciation for preserving and, and continuing our great resources. So I do want to offer a motion to approve the CPI grant proposal for uh, building coastal stewardship.
Mr. Chairperson, just, just to just close to the board, we got a little ahead of ourselves as far as the process for this grant application because of timing and the deadline. But we can only have one CPI grant open at a time. This has, this funding was identified in our state expenditure plan for some of our future projects through Restore Act funds. But we believe there will not be a conflict because the closure, the closeout for this um, grant is.
Uh, it's going to be July of twenty twenty-three.
Okay. So I had, I did speak with Ms. Cox to make sure that this would not be in conflict with any of our Restore Act um, grants that we have open, or grant applications that we have pending.
Bottom line, what's the cost to us?
It's going to be ten thousand, but most of it is going to be in time, um, for the salaries that is already paid to us as our extension agents. Uh, so on, on the specific budget, it will be um, two thousand dollars.
Two thousand?
Two thousand dollars.
Two thousand, okay.
Yes.
Now, will this be strictly for Steen Hatchie?
No, the idea is to reach uh, you know, youth in uh, the school district, including middle school, uh, probably high school. Uh, and this Inhachi school as well. And we're open to include all their, all their schools because at the end, it makes no, no difference in, in, or, or reach.
Okay, and, and as far as the plants that you were talking about, where would they be located?
Uh, well, uh, there are like two potential areas that we might work, we might work like in uh, Keaton Beach Park. Or uh, the agent will need to try to identify an area in the Steen Hatchie uh, location that might fit the needs. Because we need to go where the invasive plants are, so that's, that's the first part, go identify invasive plants, do their removal, and then plant uh, native plants.
Yeah, I, I know that we, we already have plans with the renovation of Hodges Park to um, at the end of that project, to put in new landscaping plants. And our engineers um, to, to, so potentially some of the plants could, could go in there then?
Sure, yes, yes, and that's, that's the idea, I think, uh, like a couple of years ago, was send uh. An analysis of the situation, not specifically about plants, but the situation with the sand moving through Hodges Park into the property of some of the owners there and into the canal. And uh, one of the proposals was actually to do some landscaping and, you know, planting some plants that might keep the, the sand moving away from, from far. But yes, that's definitely an area that we will be looking at.
Thank you.
So.
Okay. All in second, all in favor? County Administrator, either number ten. The board to consider approval of ready and design task order with wood environmental infrastructure solution. Assured through its intended professional services contract and associated with the Restore Act project initiative as intended by the county engineer and the county administrator.
So I'll start it off, okay?
Good.
Okay, so what you have before you is the next step of the process. If you remember, we went out and did a solicitation for professional services. That's following the Florida statute of amendment. And we wound up selecting, and we received applications, qualifications from two individuals, or two firms, John Devens and Woods. Uh, those were reviewed, screened, vetted, and then we ultimately entered into a contractual arrangement um, with Woods Consulting here. So once we got them on the contract, we requested as part of, part of our first task order, consistent with the Restore Act uh, initiative, was that. We wanted them to do a task order for design services, for dredging activities within the areas that we had prioritized. On the first two of those two being the Keaton Beach Canal system and the Steen Hatchie Boat Run area. I went back through, back and forth with Woods several times, and what you have before you today is their latest proposal for those services. We are, um, we, being the, the selection committee, have reviewed that and determined that they are appropriate for approval now. Um, with the exception of a couple of issues that I think I mentioned in the, in the verbiage there. We will make sure that those uh, couple of issues are addressed with Woods prior to actual signature of the task orders. But along the short of it is, is these proposals are ready to initiate Woods with their activities. However, uh, before we get to that point, um, there, if you looked at it at all, you'll see that there's, I think, seven different tasks are identified within each of the proposals. The first six of those deal with the actual design product all the way up through advertisement and solicitation. The seventh task order deals with construction administration and oversight, that's your CEI services. So the task one through six under both proposals um, are consistent with the dollars that we had earmarked within our pot one um, identification. When you add the CEI or construction oversight, this is only the day-to-day stuff where somebody's out there watching to make sure they're actually dredging the way they're supposed to be dredging. That costs get upside down. And what we are doing within this item is kind of twofold, we are presenting the task orders to you as appropriate for approval. But yet we need to recognize that if we move forward just the way we are, um, with the expected and already received allocations for the pot one dollars, we can't do everything. It's not going to happen tomorrow, of course, we still have to go through the design effort, we still have to go through the permitting effort, so we have some delay there. But at some point, we're going to be ready to move forward, and unless we address those costs kind of anticipatory now. We're going to be in a position where we know we're going to be underfunded then. So what we are suggesting is that maybe there's um, a possible mechanism. Still within the overall context of the Restore Act dollars that we could use to set aside or earmark those, those dollars for these projects. And not to, we believe not to the detriment of the other high priority projects that we are pursuing under the pot three dollars. So I think you'll see within the meat of this um, agenda item that's before you, is that Ms. Landa has identified um, the, or kind of quantified the, the difference in cost of. Difference in monies between what we have and what we need. And suggesting that we utilize the pot three through an amendment um, to, and amendment being the purpose to say, this is what we're willing to spend those dollars on. So that we will have sufficient funding, not only to address the design aspect of this, but also to cover our cost, our expected cost of. CEI administration as well as construction. So we've tried to encompass everything from approval of the task orders all the way up through, let's go ahead and get our ducks in a row, and get our monies in order. Now, so that, you know, we get those encumbered and don't step on our toes later.
Mr. Chairperson, if I may, um.
Yeah, I did more than that, especially, sorry.
Oh, it's, you're fine. Um, and so we've identified a shortfall of approximately one point three million dollars. And it's important to note that that's just, that's just an estimate, so I'm concerned that we may need more than that before the project's finished. But we do have funds available in our pot three funding. Um, an SEP amendment would be due on October fifteenth. So with approval from the board, what we'd like to do is, is prepare an amendment to our state expenditure plan. Um, go through that process, hopefully that would be approved by the Gulf Consortium in June of next year. And hopefully, we would have the funding next fall, which would be a year from now, which would, would line up um, hopefully with the timing of the design and permitting, correct?
Yeah, um, you know, and that's, as much as an unknown of actual spoil material that's going to be there, there's an almost equal unknown that seems these days with the expectancy of hurdle. So that, you know, what I told the participants in the conversation last week, the week before last, whenever it was, that. You know, we would not anticipate that there would be that much of an obstacle, but in reality, the hardest part of all of this is, it seems, from the way we did it before. Was, uh, when we're looking at doing some dredging, was the permitability of the spoil site. That seemed to be the biggest obstacle for the environmental guys. It wasn't so much as how much you're taking out and what you're taking out of the canal system, as much as it was, where are you going to put and what are you putting there? And that was, that is something that, you know, we have a location that we worked out with one of the um, coastal landowners. I don't believe it's necessarily in its original permitted size sufficient to handle all of what is expected to be removed from here. But there were additional upland properties that were there that perhaps we will be able to um, work with that same landowner. If that's the case, uplands spoil locations are way easier to permit than environmentally sensitive areas. So I don't, you know, optimistically, no, I don't believe, I want us to be in positions where we're sitting there, ready to kind of holding it to solicit, waiting on our money to, to be coincident with it. Versus, we have money a year and we're still waiting on trying to get a permit though. You know, don't fool yourselves that permitting will be easy in this coastal.
You got Mr. Bishop to go too?
We do have Mr. Bishop.
Will be seat, is that where we need to go?
Will be seat, yes, sir.
Need one?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, do you think the chances of, will be successful for the SEP?
I do.
Okay, and this is just for uh, Keaton Beach Canal and Steen Hatchet Canal?
Basically.
Yeah, and so if everything goes well.
The basin there did that, sure. The Steen Hatch boat right basin?
Yes.
So go to the picture in hand, that's better.
So if everything goes well, um, then dredging potentially could start next fall? Okay, I, I still have people asking me more frequently, when we're going to dredge, so then we can tell them, maybe next fall?
That, that would be the current, if, if all this timing works out right, yes. That, that would be the current, if, if all this timing works out right, yes, ma'am, next year is the year. You know as well as we do that there was a timing on the allocation, you basically had to get enough to do something with it before you could do something with it. And that's, that's where we're at now, we're on it, we're at that cusp, but we still know today, as she said, we don't know if it's the right amount, but what I, she and I discussed yesterday, we've closed that gap, we've responsibly closed that gap, so that, you know, we know that whatever it actually is, when we get to that point, we should be in a tremendously closer point than we are knowingly today. So that, I mean, I've talked to her for, and Melissa with Langton, you know, for coming up with this, that, hey, here's a way that we really don't jeopardize the other projects because of the enormity of the dollars in that one, let's roll them over and use them into this one that we know is already gonna be suffering from the first, from the get-go.
Yeah. And so, the other thing, potentially, would be that permitting could be an issue and hold this project up, too. So, are there other factors?
Absolutely, yeah. Realizing that the spoil, and if you read through any of the task orders, you know that we'll kind of start knowing some of that stuff partway through the process, you know, because they're going to do all the formalizing and the conceptualizing of the beginning, but by the time we get the survey and start getting some quantities, that's when they're gonna start knowing what to look for, that's when we start looking in those areas that would accommodate that quantity, and then at your sixty percent completion portion, that's when you're gonna start seeing numbers, numbers of cost expectation, based on how much the design has gotten to that point. So, we're, you know, we're gonna have some, a much better idea partway through the process than we have before the process has even started. And, you know, hopefully, the location that we have is kind of mid, midway between the two locations. Both locations would still necessitate hauling, versus being able to hydraulically transport this stuff. That doesn't mean that there aren't other opportunities closer by that, you know, may suddenly become available, once they figure out this is a reality. A, can we do this? Well, we can, as long as, and I've had people approach me, and it's like, you know, we're not gonna say that anything's off the table with respect to where a possible spoil location is, but you need to realize that we're not going to move into something that we know is going to force more cost on us to make something better for you. So it has to be a mutually beneficial arrangement, or else, you know, we're wasting our time.
Exactly. Now, just for my personal explanation, when this stuff is hauled to wherever, will it be buried, or just put on top of the?
No, it doesn't have to be buried, like, the one that we looked at, it was an old bar pit, so we had what used to be, you know, a surface area that had been removed, so you had a cavity there on top, just exposed, like a little open pond, and we were literally going to, we identified the perimeter of what we could fill, we did a quantification based on what the original ground surface did look like, that gave us a cubic yard, and they permitted it for that many cubic yards, cubic feet of material.
Is that covered with some hyphaline or something on the bottom?
Yes, sir. And, and that, too, you'll see in one of the discussions there, that there is a sediment, a assessment, that you'll look at, you know, what it is, you know, what's in it, and if it's luck, you know, it's not something that we're not typically accustomed to, but if it is laden with heavy metals and high departments and such, you know, perhaps it may need some additional considerations. And that's not to say that it would be one and all of it, you know, you may have something maybe further up towards the front that doesn't, or towards the very end, that doesn't get as much flushing activity, so you may have some different materials that are sediment in that location versus, say, at the mouth of it, where you have hundreds of boats going past it routinely. So I wouldn't say it's a one-and-done type thing, the Steen Hatchet Boat Ramp area, you know, if you, if any of you've been there during the lower tides, you'll see that there's a big mud flat there, you know, and when it was all opened up originally back then, I don't know if they just did what they could where they had the finger docks originally, and just didn't reach that area, but, you know, it's literally just beyond it, so that should be a lot of just mud and sand, you know, so I, I can't imagine there's that much of, there shouldn't be as much of an issue with that material, for sure. So hopefully, it all comes out, you know, cleans the whistle, that'd be great.
So, this proposal for these shortfall funds, this covers both projects as total?
Yes, sir.
And the location for the spoils is sufficient for both sides that are projecting?
Like, like I said, you know, we, we have it, best I recall, it was around 6,000 yards, and I think some of this is, you know, could be like 20,000 yards, but we're going based off of, like, a 2006 evaluation of the bathroom, the geometry in that canal system. What does it look like today, don't know. You know, did it, it could be worse, it could be better, you know, you're not really sure, but we knew, and y'all may remember that when there was shoaling in the Army Corps Channel, that we, maybe it was after her meeting, I think it was, that we tried to find some areas to dredge those, so that we would deepen the Army Corps Channel beyond the turning basin at Keaton. That was our original focus, so we got that area and some more, but the area that we're looking at has additional uphill areas that are not as productive as they could be, so that's, that was one hope that I have, that, I know, given that we permitted the area that we did, expanding that further to the north, the hardest part's gonna be the landowner permission, not the permitting aspect.
And, and the assumption that this is, that obviously, there may be additional permitting, like you, you said, could be required, given the condition of the spoils or the materials that's right, and that cost was exceeding what's listed here, obviously.
Certainly, you know, you always have those unforeseen circumstances. We throw in some of this, a little bit of contingency, but when you get into permitting and, and land value, you know, it gets up pretty quick.
This also stipulates in these assumptions that would, would take part with the county with the public meeting?
Yeah, and if you'll look at the agenda item itself, you'll see that, I think I may mention to them that they had reference that they would, you know, attend those meetings with us, I'm looking more for them to coordinate those meetings. I want us to be there as a resource, not as the responsible party for handling these things. Beyond that, one of the things that you guys will be very mindful of, given the congestion of our canal systems, are, there are lots of obstructions and intrusions into the canal system, and one of the, probably may, one of the main concerns is undermining, because of the dredging activity kind of going through there, and you handle that from the onset with how you dredge, instead of, you know, we've got a hundred foot, it'd be nice just to clean a whole hundred foot swath, well, the only way it's gonna happen is if you take everything out. That's probably not practical. So, what they do is you wind up getting more triangular to where you shallow up along the edges where you're getting close to obstructions, and then you get to your design depth further down in the bottom. You're buying time, because it, you know, will tend to slump back down into a natural configuration, but just to be sure of ourselves from a liability standpoint, they try to pass above to county attorney to be responsible for drafting the documentation, to where we have these releases and waivers from these homeowners through there, and it's like, I don't mind them helping, but we need a starting point, and if you guys are experienced and immersed in this, why aren't you bringing documents to the table to begin with? So I'm pushing that back on to them, that I want them to be more a lead role on that versus a facilitator. So those are the things that we put in there that I will discuss with Ms. Arlene, and they can either like it, or they can, and change it, it's up to them, I don't care, but we're not gonna take that type of responsibility.
So, so would we be responsible for obtaining these, these waivers?
I, I, I want to put as much responsibility on them as possible, especially when it comes to preparing these things, when it's a little bit outside of our realm of experience, if we are contracting to somebody who is saying they are experienced.
Yeah, well.
It just applies in ways.
When this project is underway, is that gonna put a halt to traffic using places and the use of the places? I mean, obviously, it's a project that, you know, everyone wants to happen, but, you know, you're gonna have them folks that, if they can't use it.
You know, it's, it, and, and I would only say that there has to be some point at which it will affect it, simply because of the physical footprint of, of our system, or how they're going to mechanically remove it, or hydraulically remove it, so you would have a physical space, so you know you're gonna have some obstruction there. Hopefully, and, and this would be the way that we have to kind of put those into the specs, is to force it to be in as much of a configuration as practical, that still allows continual, some, to some degree, continual use of the system itself, of the canal system itself. That may be one boat goes past at a time, you know, I don't think it's practical for us to allow them to lock it off completely, but at some point, they need somewhere to work, and it's gonna be hard to do that if you've got this going back and forth constantly, and that's gonna turn, translate into cost. So if we recognize some of that upfront, and contractors know they can be a little bit intrusive, I think you see that in the cost that you have, if they have to keep it completely open and accessible the whole time they're working, I think you would see that in either extended timelines, or, and/or expanded cuts.
And I guess we would put, would we put notifications out, I guess, maybe around the local newspaper?
Yeah, the guy behind me, obviously, we make the resource out of noon, and of course, you know, we would, I, I don't see it unreasonable for us to post onsite signs, you know, dredging activities in progress, even at the mouth of the canal, and at the Boat Ramp, and then, you know, hit at least one or two of the other, every point of access, I think, from open water, as well as maybe one intermediate in between, obviously, the people that live there, they kind of know what's going on. Steen Hatchet area would be much less intrusive, I think they could catch the upriver side, probably from the river, or even up around the fingers, and catch that area without really affecting the throat or the, the western edge. I don't, I don't know that it would...
Kind of, given the footage, what would the projection be on the timeframe for each of these? That's, and I'm, it's not a, it's just a ballpark number in respect to, and I know that's hard to say, because you're not certain of how much has to be removed, so obviously, that impacts speed in which they can progress.
Actually, in the proposals, the CEI, and, and it, and it was, it was based on an estimate that the CEI used, which is North Florida Professional Services, they used an estimate of cubic quantities removed daily, and that gave you about a 210 time, 210 day timeframe for Keaton, and 21 days for Steen Hatchet.
So, I mean, within those projections, obviously, there's a...
Like an eight-month timeframe for both, if they were coincidental.
That's them working day in and day out.
No, I don't think, you know, obviously, I would suggest it's probably you have greater activities on the weekends.
I mean, other than the weekend, but, yeah, pretty much weekdays.
Yeah, work, these are workdays.
The preference would be that that timeframe could be structured so that it had the least impact on the peak season.
It would probably be best to start at post-September tenth, and maximize your time period during the winter. You have some more extreme tides, which makes it a little bit easier to do your dredging as well, as long as your barge has maneuverability, that's one, you know, but I guess you could make sure you always float where you dredge.
Well, I can, I can.
It isn't how big it is.
There are a few people that do live there permanently on, at Keaton Beach. Is there any possibility that some of the work could be done at nighttime, where basically you have mostly bacon pies during that, during that time period?
Local answer is anything is possible.
What's the real answer?
I wouldn't suggest it. I think that's more of one that you're gonna get, you're damned if you do, and damned if you don't, because there may be some that, you know, if you encourage that, and then you'll have the potential for others that, you know, I couldn't do anything for, listen to that dredge all last night, and there's dump trucks slamming, you know, so I, I would say, you know, within the normal daylight hours, because these are people, too, you know, so if they can get a 10-hour workday, a 12-hour workday, within the daylight timeframe, that's, they're gonna be the most cautious, as far as what, they can see what they're doing, because you don't want light planes running up and down that, that canal system either, so I, I wouldn't encourage it unless you just told me I had to.
No, I'm, I'm just trying to think outside the box, and, and there are areas where there are not people that live there all the time, I think very few people live there year-round, but I'm just, just...
You know, is the, and, and you have a valid suggestion with respect to the Steen Hatchet Boat Ramp, you know, because you've basically got a big, big mud flat area that they know they can just back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, and they may want to work a little later, but I would, I would kind of expect they'd wanna do it in daylight hours, truly.
That's probably.
And if they're on the highway system, you know, it just may be safer for them to be out there during the daylight.
Yes, sir.
So, what would we need?
We would need approval of the task orders, and also, we would need approval from the board to prepare an SEP amendment, because that, that deadline is coming up pretty quickly.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, for the approval of the dredging and design task orders.
Sorry. Motion is second, all in favor? All right, okay.
And then, a motion for the SEP.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor?
Mr. Chairperson, just as an aside, because of the timing of this, and the timing of our board workshops, we may, we may need to submit the SEP amendment, and then come back to the board for ratification. I'm sure Ms. Cox will need every day she can to complete this amendment, but that's something that our county engineer and myself can review, if, if we get into that position where we have, where the deadline is on us and we have to submit.
Let's, okay.
Thank you.
Got all you got? Okay. Number eleven. The county administrator to discuss informational items.
I do not have any additional items.
Comments and concern from the public for non-agenda items, is there anyone?
I'm the only one here. Mark, uh, three, three, eight, four, so I read, I've been back in person in a while, been listening to y'all.
Okay.
Another time period. Seven meetings back, when I was actually here, we had a break, and we were waiting on something, and I said, I'll come up and fill some time, and I said, hey, everybody, I have a forest festival this year, and then, of course, we had the masses, like, we voted against me, and we kind of just held our breath and hoped that things were gonna continue to, that we'd get through with the periods that we had. I read most of our good stories in the newspaper, and I'm just gonna speak up by half, and after the second week in a row. Um, I wrote this, we're good stories in these papers and our, we just wanted to be dropped by having you after the second weekend in a row. Forest Festival, so, we're about a month out, hopefully that, uh, things will continue to, um, increase. Good thing is this is pretty much everything we do at Forest Fest, the day of and the evening before, and everything's outside. I think now compared to last year, we're a bit more used to hopefully how to act when they're around people. Um, we're, we are discussing how we may do a mitigate where we tend to have crowding, the line for the fish fry. A lot of it just comes down to we're, we're, we're in a new world now, so things that we, that used to be, as, as I will put it here, an up and down boat now, suddenly that comes a, kind of hard discussion on how we're gonna figure out how to do it. And some things just end up being impossible. Some, some events will not happen, unfortunately. Um, but we're moving forward, we haven't had discussions, um, with the health firm. We're gonna hopefully have a COVID vaccination clinic inside the Forest Capital Hall day of, since people can be there, hopefully we can encourage people probably to get vaccinated while they're out there, see how that works. Um, but it may not look exactly like what we're used to, but we're pushing forward. Um, some people are not happy with it, other people are very happy with it and we're just gonna try to be respectful and mindful. Uh, we have not been very public about, hey, this is a fact, this, frankly, this seems to be a different place in terms of situation. It's too much for these kind of public, I mean, I was, but we have been hiding it, we're, we're not on social media and everything. But so far the, um, response has been solid, we're already, ready to parade out the patient, hey. So when we don't update.
So you haven't put a date out there yet?
Oh, it, it's, it's our annual fourth Saturday in October, it'll be the twenty-third. There's some activities downtown on the twenty-second.
You, are you ready to announce which events will be canceled or you wanna wait on that?
Um, I would say that unless we have a last-minute surprise, we would have a carnival this year.
You'd have one?
A lot more. Um, the carnival companies that survived not being able to actually have carnivals for a year are looking for larger. But then it's, then what we can offer is, I'm gonna make more money on, on, on weekends than they can here. Until they get that, I would imagine once they get, kind of their financial footing, we can get more. And I'm gonna get one. And, um, I found out last night, I don't think we'll have the lumber jacks this year. And it might be an insurance issue. But one other thing, um, another thing we're having trouble getting pitched for, and we found a solution for that. Uh, no caution, um, but we will have our military vehicle, um, that's why that's our fastest growing event. That's the NLP company, um, chase on competition, killer competition, main stage entertainment, fish fry. I figure out how to work in this new world.
Is there a idea of whether that previous two is a day of the festival?
No, that will be, they'll begin the parade and then they will be, pretty much everything up around the highway. That, it just keeps growing. It, it will probably be where it was the last few years plus expanding into where the, um, car show usually is because, um, Dan Simmons is in charge of that and he is very active and very, um, and that continues to grow.
Did it put the show on or?
It's what the show should be on, yes, sir. Brother, it's a soft competition, we'll be there, stage entertainment. Um, like, so I think the only thing that we'll be missing are the car show, the lumber jacks and carnival. So I'm gonna be as mindful of, of the situation, but I still want to take one more step towards.
Well, I can't drive my Porsche, huh?
What's that?
I can't drive my Porsche Chevrolet.
Um, you can drive it in the rain if you want, if you want to get application, but we don't have an actual car show this year.
Grand Marshall.
Okay, if you know of anyone that would be interested in sharing a car show, please let us know, that's our biggest problem. It's on, we have not been able to find one. To build a car show, we need someone that, well, me in that event, except for we don't find one. I always look for volunteers.
I'd like to thank you all for all the effort that you put in, I'm sure all your own to sponsor this, this tradition that we've had. I can't remember, and, um, so just thank you.
Last year was a weird year, we, we managed to still have the parade and fireworks, um, so, you know, we've done the last five years, but we get next to have a day of that. We're gonna do our best to not be out here, so, uh, just want to let everyone know that we have been mindful of, of the COVID situation. We're not just being held today about it.
I remember, um, it used to be, here's some pictures too, then at the, um, well, we call it the J C Park back then. But it's a duck pond now, it used to be held there, a long time ago.
Leaving y'all, we're not rattling with that man.
I was there when that man got, I remember that, of what he looked like and everything.
One of us had, it's just, as, as an aside, we, we, um, it was found by one of our board members in a, um, antique shop somewhere in Georgia, little random little town in Georgia. Um, it's actually a wooden slice that was painted on celebrating the second annual Florida Forest Festival. You know, we were the pine tree festival for the first ten years, that was, this slice was from, I think, the sixty-seven festival. We have that in our office at the chambers. Some local volunteers, um, it's donated some money to by, we didn't bring it back to period.
Thank you.
You want to add something, Mark? Board members?
Thank you, Mark, for being here, we always like it when you're here, but if you're not here, I, I know you're listening. Um, appreciate staff and what you do, it is an honor and a privilege for me, sir.
All right, okay, want to go out here?
I'm retired.